All right, the next agenda item on our agenda is public comments. I've got three people sign up for public comments. If you could please come up to the podium for your public comments. I'll limit to three minutes. Please state your name and address, beginning with Ms. Jansen.
No, I am. Bon?
There you go.
Thank you. My name is Jan Smith. I live at 4301 Wesley Chapel Road, right there, across from the proposed rezoning. And I represent the citizens of responsible growth. I'm not wearing red, I'm wearing black because I thought this was dead, but I guess it's not. I'm here to speak against the rezoning request at the corner of 84 and Potter Road. I state the same reasons that were brought before when this request was defeated about a year ago. And the main concern I have is the safety of Wesley Chapel Elementary School parents and children. We do not want to increase traffic there until the total projects by DOT have been completed so we know how traffic flows. And there's no need for any other building for commercial or industrial when we have all this area that is undeveloped. I just give you the example of Dunkin' Donuts. There was a request to put it down there. And, oh my goodness, it's appeared up here. So I think that Ashton, who is the developer over here, is watching this very closely. I just would really recommend that you not approve this and send a nonapproval to your county or to your senior of your board here so that they know that you stand united on this. I just really agree with the fact that we have to spend time again to do what we've already done, only just for half a parcel of what was originally intended. It's the same thing, just a different day. And I would really recommend that you vote this out. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Mr. Boxman.
I'm Bob Smith, 4301 Wesley Chapel Road, North Carolina. I want to speak to the request to rezone that property that's on at 84 and Potter Road. My concern is we're getting the cart before the horse. We have a major traffic problem there, red, off of Potter Road and also off of 84. So that's where entrance to this parking area would be for this rezone, office space, that kind of thing. I think that the roads need to be improved. Traffic flow needs to be improved before we start building on that property. Just because a developer has bought a residential property and wants to change it over for him, you know, they turn a profit on this property, I don't think it's wise for this community to approve that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Last one on the list is Sandra Burke.
I'm Dr. Sandra Burke, and I live at 3900 Voltaire Drive, just south of Potter Road. I've come before this board in the past in order to register my objection to the developer proposed for the corner of Potter Road and 84. I'd like to give a brief recap of the issue as I see it. First, the developer wanted to place a small shopping center, described by the marketing director as a quaint village-type environment with shops, walk-in trails, and places for families to gather. It sounded quite lovely, in fact, but it didn't fly. Second, if my memory serves me correctly, the proposal morphed into an area with a skating rink and a childcare facility. That, too, was rejected. Then, I believe, the next step was to ask one of the state senators to de-annex the parcel so that Wesley Chapel would have no say in the matter at all regarding development of that area. The outcry and the objection to this approach, I believe, prompted the senator to withdraw his proposal to de-annex the parcel. Now, now we have another, yet another approach being brought before the community. This time, as I understand it, the same developer is seeking rezoning of 12 acres at Potter Road and 84 from residential to office industrial. I have a question. When will it become clear that the majority of residents, many of whom spoke vehemently against all of the original proposals, do not want development of that corner? How many times will the same attempt be made hoping for a different outcome? It's by understanding that continuing to do the same thing over and over and hoping for different results, I think, involves, is some sort of insanity, frankly. Please know that the majority of residents are not at all interested in having that intersection become Sun Valley South, basically. And that approval of this request will likely be the first step on a slippery slope to that result. I do hope that the planning board will once again reject this request, and I thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next agenda item this evening is additions, deletions, and approval agenda. I have received a request to switch 7A to 7B. What do you guys feel about that?
For what reason?
That 7B might go a little bit quicker than 7A, perhaps?
The red next to each other, it's not going to be that much different. It would work if it was related to the timeframe, but...
At first, I think we're both on about the same, so... So, do you guys, I feel blindly the way it is, is the request to switch?
Does it matter?
I mean, if we're looking at about the same timeframe, I would agree with you.
Living in this?
Yeah.
I feel that way, too.
I make my assumption, I believe, in such a business.
Okay. The whole agenda?
Yeah. I didn't see any other issues.
All right. We have a motion from David. Approve the agenda as is. And second, Vince, all in favor? All right, thank you. All right, next agenda item this evening is approval minutes, November 26, 2018 meeting. Two months ago. Questions?
No questions.
No?
I'll make any questions.
All right, all clear? All right, thank you very much. Next agenda item is approval of our planning board 2019 meeting schedule. Should be in our packets. From what I can tell, it's similar to all of our other years with no meeting in December due to Christmas, except it looks like in May it's normally for over. Other than that, I assume it's...
The only concern that I have is the November meeting. It's going to be three days before Thanksgiving, but, I mean, typically it's either before or after, you know, three days after Thanksgiving. So as long as we don't see that as being an obstacle, I'd be in favor of approving as it stands.
Okay, yes?
Same.
Good, good. All right, can I get a motion to pass?
I'll give your motion to pass.
Thank you. Can I get a second? All right, all in favor? Very good, thank you. All right, and next agenda item is council member in. Do we have any council members to step up this evening? I hear so. All right. So moving on to number seven, actually quite quick, we're a minute's ahead of schedule. All right, so moving on to 7A, rezoning request for NC 84 and Potter Road. Robyn, please give introduction.
What you guys have in your packet is the rezoning staff report and commendation. We had a request in to rezone 13.521 acres from R40 to OI, that is, single-family residential to office institutional. The existing land use is either residential, agricultural, or vacant. Surrounding land use is residential dwellings vacant and the elementary school. The surrounding zoning is R40. The future land use map has one of the parcels, parcel number 06024030, as designated as office institutional. All the others are listed as R40, low-density residential. Again, the request is to do a straight rezoning to office institutional. Your staff report has a map, kind of a zoom-in capture of the zoning map and the future land use map with these parcels highlighted. You also have an aerial image from Union County GIS. And we have the zoning map is on the screen behind you guys if you need a refresher of there. So the future land use plan, like I said, the map has one of the parcels designated as office institutional. But the plan itself has three goals that pertain. Goal one is to maintain the strong, single-family, low-density residential structure of the village. Goal two was to prevent strip development from occurring anywhere in Wesley Chapel by limiting new non-residential development to designated strategic locations. And two policies under that. The village's commercial, governmental, and institutional hub located at 84 and Waxell Indian Trail Road should be supported and encouraged to finish build-out. Policy three is that office institutional clusters, including medical offices and/or continuing care residential facilities, should only occur at areas designated on the land use map. Such developments should generate low-traffic volumes and occur in a condensed area in the vicinity of a major intersection. Uses that generate high-traffic volumes shall not be encouraged outside the village's commercial hub, and driveway access to 84 shall be limited. And then goal three, to encourage that new non-residential development be attractively designed, pedestrian-friendly, and in harmony with the surrounding development. In terms of other aspects, transportation, we have two upcoming DOT projects. We have a traffic circle going on, going in at Potter and Potter. That's projected for construction in 2020. We have right-turn lanes going on Potter Road at the intersection of 84 and Potter Road, again, planned for construction in 2020. I did reach out to DOT, and they had no comments regardless. They didn't have anything really to say about it. There is no FEMA floodplain or floodway designation on any of these properties. I do have a note here that there was a large pond to the west of the property that had some concerns. It's a critical dam there as well. The pond would act as a natural boundary to the west for OI, so you wouldn't have to necessarily expand it to the west because that pond would be a natural barrier. But we would make sure that any type of site plan would go to the village engineer to make sure that there would be no undue circumstances that would affect that pond negatively. There's also a natural gas substation within the area, so if you look at where the parcels are, it looks like a little hump over one tiny little property, that's where the natural gas substation is. And we had gotten an email in October from the natural gas place asking us to identify certain properties that had people, that were potentially a certain amount of people that would be around during a certain period of time in a certain proximity to transmission lines. And so with that, depending on what kind of uses would go on this property, we would have to notify a Piedmont about those, and that would be considered a site that they would identify. It just says site identification, I don't know if they have a specific name that they use, but we do have that. And then schools. And so Wesley Chapel Elementary School already has some traffic concern issues with their entrances, and their concern is that any increase in development would increase the traffic and would exacerbate the safety issues that we already have, and it might trigger that they would have to move their entrance to another location. Now, it's potential, but that was a concern that they had. In terms of how would I interpret the land use plan, at this point in time, I feel as the application currently stands, with some of the unknowns, that it is inconsistent with the future land use plan. The map itself has one of the parcels designated as office institutional, and I have gone back and looked at some of the minutes from when that was originally designated and the last time you guys went through the future land use plan, and there is inconsistency over if that was meant to just be that one parcel, or if it was meant to be vague. And we can talk about that as a board when we talk about future land use plans in the future and how to view that moving forward. So that was a little bit ambiguous. It could be either way. Again, the future land use map is to show an idealized vision in the future, and it's up to you guys to determine when to make those changes. The language of the future land use plan does state very clearly, as I mentioned before, though, that the 84 Waxell Indian Trail Road hub should finish build-out first before any non-residential development happens elsewhere. And so while we have a map that says that, yes, one of these parcels is designated for office institutional, you do have a timing language that addresses timing of that in your plan itself. Again, going back to that, the plan, the written plan makes it clear that it is to be a condensed area within the vicinity of a major intersection. And then otherwise, just from my standpoint, just with the negative unintended consequences that could occur with the elementary school and maybe something with the natural gas substation, not knowing the uses, provides me with a better option on this. And so I think a better option would be a conditional district. And we did talk about that briefly, but this stands before you as is now, and if you have any additional questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
I have a question. What's the, I don't know if this is going to come out here, but do you know what the available, or the vacant spacing is in the past lot?
I couldn't give you the square footage. I know that there's a couple of areas that can be built out, specifically the area right next to Village Hall.
Do you have an idea what that is?
Oh, and there's also two more junior anchors.
Is the use all retail? Retail or restaurants, right? I mean, it's, can they build any, I'm just wondering, can they build offices there?
It depends on what it is. There's currently a veterinary office.
Oh, that's true. All right.
And at that point, it would just be, depending on what they came to us with, if it wasn't already in there moving to us because it is conditional use, then we would have to redo, either amend the conditional use or just do another conditional for that.
I remember talking about offices.
What's that?
I remember Aston talking about offices.
Okay.
Well, and they have a medical office. The one is a medical office in Village Hall. So I think it would depend on which specific office it was.
So then, Robin, goal two, policy one, commercial, governmental, and institution hub, that's always been written into that policy, right?
Sue, can you repeat that?
Your goal number two, policy one?
Mm-hmm.
Is the village's commercial, governmental, and industrial hub located at the corner should be supported. We've always had all three of those listed as part of that policy, right?
Yes, as far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay. Let's see, through their packet list, uses allowed.
Yes, I did a chart there for you guys so you could compare what's allowed now versus what would be allowed by.
Thank you.
And I did notate if there was conditional use or conditional standards, that that is notated on that chart as well.
Oh, so in the line goes just about verbatim to our section five table of uses. And went down through and this.
Yep, that's what I did. I just wanted to make it easier for you guys to flip through the whole.
It was, much easier.
It's perfect. And on our conditional land use plan, that one lot, and I know that you're right, it's kind of a half-circle, most of that lot there is covered in blue. Do you know the offhand size of that lot?
I have it somewhere.
Because overall, it's thirteen and a half, it looks like it's probably about, what, acre and a half, two acres? Two acres, four. Okay, so we're going, so the request is going from one point, relatively 1.89 acres, we set ours to thirteen, over thirteen and a half acres.
Yes.
Is there three residences on these properties as well right now, right?
The ones that are along Wesley Chapel Road slash Potter Road, I don't believe in this request. I think they're all vacant. The other one, I have to look up the...
Yeah, the other one, there's three residences.
I can probably answer that. There's a handful, it's like three, two or three houses are in this cluster of properties.
Excuse me, just for recording, can you just tell us who you are?
I'm sorry, I'm Cody Turner, I'm the owner's representative. But there are a handful of houses that are currently as part of the parcel there before. And I'll have a few things, too, whenever...
The Foxfire Estates, though, the ones on Wesley Chapel Road, they're still vacant, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought.
Is it all Foxfire Estates? No, there's a...
The way I understand it, the Foxfire Estates is the name of the subdivision. That's within there, that's what Foxfire Estates is.
When you say unoccupied, you mean, are sort of... I'm just wondering, so these residents that are unoccupied, is that right? In these thirteen and a half acres?
No, sir, there's three houses, three houses that are currently occupied.
Oh, okay.
On the parcels that make up this thirteen and a half acres. There's, how many, what are Robin, six, seven parcels? If I'm not mistaken?
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, you know, going from residential to OI, if this is developed, I assume those residences would go away and lose three residents. It's one thing to develop, make it like a subdivision or a commercial, whatever, it's another thing to take away residents, right, to build. And that's, you know, that's something new for us.
Not only taking away, but taking away possibility moving forward for them, yeah.
But I would assume that the residences would agree they're home or occupied by the landowners that are listed.
That's right. Yes.
And we do have signed letters from them, this is what I'm saying, that some of them did.
I have a question on that, Robin. There's a Java Rogers that was listed as an owner, but there was no...
His tax record has...
She decides, the current owner, her daughter, I believe.
Okay, then who gave downtown Wesley Chapel permission to file requesting petition on her behalf?
The co-owner, which I believe on that was Vicki Rogers.
Linda McBride.
Excuse me, Linda McBride.
The tax record from Union County, the owner is Java Rogers, however, there is a notation that Linda McBride is the contact.
And was that noted in the information submitted by measure?
They gave us the parcel sheets from the parcel reports from Union County GIS and verified them.
All right, Cody, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I have a few other items, just, I want to run through it.
Great, let's do it.
I got a couple minutes. Good evening again, my name's Cody Turner, I'm the representative for the developer that's got the petition before you. Appreciate you allowing us to be here and present, you know, before you. Thank you, Ms. Byers, for working with me over the past few months to put this together, you know, some back and forth. I know she's still getting accustomed to everything here, but she's done a great job in working with me throughout the whole process. So I just had a few things additionally I wanted to add in addition to what she's already covered. And that the main reason that we're here before you tonight with this petition is that we do not feel that the current zoning for the property that we have before you being petition reflects the most appropriate or best-suited use in the future, and due to its proximity to the intersection of Highway 84 and Potter Road, and being adjacent to a stoplight at a major intersection, a few of the reasons that we feel that way. We feel this property is perfectly suited for the office institutional use that is being petitioned before you. As stated in the staff report, goal two, policy three states that office institutional clusters occur in condensed area in the vicinity of a major intersection such as NC 84 and Potter Road. We feel that based on this, the property being petitioned fits exactly that description and is further supported by the existing Wesley Chapel Elementary School and existing institutional use that is situated on the adjacent property corner. We disagree that the allowable uses within the office institutional category would have any negative consequences on the Wesley Chapel Elementary School. The staff report states that some uses could have a negative impact, but there's no supporting information as to how or why there could be potentially negative consequences, nor are there specific uses listed that could potentially have negative consequences. We believe that this proposed zoning in this location would in fact be beneficial to the school in the long term. With close proximity to doctor's offices, daycare centers, and other areas for learning outside of the classroom, it would prove to be an appropriate and convenient location. We feel that any and all of the office institutional uses that are listed for the news table before you fall into a category for what could be considered an appropriate use adjacent to a school. As noted in your packet, there are two NC DOT transportation projects that are scheduled to be constructed in the near future, within the next year or two, year and a half, I would assume 2020. I'm not sure if they're calling it early 2020, late 2020, that's kind of my point here, but we feel that these two projects will greatly benefit the intersection and the surrounding roads that are, you know, that do suffer from some traffic issues currently. We would not propose to move forward with any development or construction activities prior to the time when these improvements are planned to be completed. I would also like to note that NC DOT was contacted, as stated again, and they did not have any concerns about this zoning proposal. I think the one thing to keep in mind is that they do mention that moving forward, that proposed uses, and when the property does develop, all those plans are subject to NC DOT review, and depending on the strip generation for those could potentially trigger other improvements if warranted. We do not feel that the staff should provide input on the possibility of a gas leak at the existing substation there. I think it's really kind of a... I think it's really kind of a moot point beside, beside the fact, uh, this substation currently sits, you know, roughly five hundred foot away from Wesley Chapel Elementary School. So if there's that much of a concern, I think that's a bigger, a bigger concern for the elementary school that's existing very, in close proximity to. Um, and it's even much closer to the existing residential homes that currently are there and those residents or homes that could be built by right to today. Uh, I actually had reached out and spoke with a Piedmont Natural Gas representative, uh, just here recently. And I kind of explained to him some of the concerns that were put forth in the packet here and he, he told me that he did not see that as being a concern. Uh, I had asked him if he could kind of put together their, you know, their maintenance schedule, how often they're checking the facility, how they're notified if and when there is a gas leak, how often there have been gas leaks in the past and if anybody was negatively affected. He hasn't been able to get that information back to me yet, but he did say that I could pass along his information and what other questions or concerns there are. If he didn't know the answer, he'd be glad to direct you or anyone else to the person to sufficiently answer those questions or concerns. And he mentioned that these stations are located all throughout the region, often in close proximity to businesses, houses, recreational centers, and areas, et cetera. And he did mention that they are routinely maintained, checked, and to make sure that they are running and operating in a safe manner. So with all that being said, uh, we do think this is an appropriate and a reasonable request and ask that you consider the facts and the circumstances in making your recommendation to, to the village council. I appreciate your time and I have, if you have any other questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
Any questions for me?
I have.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, the, one of the concerns is the large pond on the west adjacent to the property. Have there been any consideration if this was granted and this area is going to increase, you know, even for this, uh, surface is there? And so is there any concern or plans to monitor the pond to see, you know, I mean, that, that's a potentially dangerous situation with the dams there being so.
Sure, I, I agree. I, I remember before there was some research, uh, and the village done and forced looking into that. And I do understand that there were some questions or concerns on that. However, the petition you have before you does not include that as part of it. So any development plans would be subject to engineering review. That any stormwater would be collected and maintained on site and discharged at the same rate or a slower rate than it falls at in its natural state today. There's a lot of calculations and reviews way above my, uh, purview of understanding. But I do know that it's, that working in this business and doing it on multiple different projects all across, it's a very strenuous and tedious process that not only gets reviewed at the local level, but the state level as well. So to answer your question, you know, nothing, no development on that, on this property that we're talking about here tonight should have any adverse effect on that pond.
It would be the wrong, if it was a concern, it would be, I know, but I knew the pond wasn't included in the plan this time. But I was just wondering about what, and about what, you know, steps have been taken to ensure there would be any, you know, effect on the pond. So that's what I was asking.
And again, that would all be part of the, of the development plans too. The, the grading plan and grading design of our site would be such that any drainage, any water is coming back onto our site and not on our site, not towards that pond.
So the pond, Danny, has been a consideration? You have been, I mean, you are looking at the pond as a potential for a problem?
That would, that would be a consideration that's looked at when engineering plans are produced.
You're welcome. I got a question. So you guys are, obviously we've got letters that you're representing the other residents.
Yes.
That live there. Um, you know, specifically the people, well, any of the landlords or residents. You know, I look at the difference, we have a chart in front of us that are forty and OI. All right, so trying to think of the consequences, if this does get rezoned, OI, either development happens or it doesn't happen towards residents. I hope they understand, you know, if you're speaking for them, that, you know, if they want to have a produce stand again, well, they can't. That's not allowed in OI. If they want to produce something cool in their house, right? They can't, that's not allowed in OI.
We, we have purchase contracts with those residents that's contingent upon successful rezoning.
I got you, okay.
So, uh, yes. Any that we don't own, we have purchase contracts in place and have had for some time that's contingent upon. So if, if we don't, if, if we're turned down or denied, then their property stays that as it is. However, if it does move through, get approval, then we will purchase that property from, from those owners.
Ah, very good, okay. Good, because that could be, you can see it though.
Uh, yeah, for sure.
Problem, you get rezoned, nothing happens and then you're left, you can't do anything, so it's probably that, you normally do residential. All right, guess any other questions for Cody?
I do, and I'm just going to, I'm afraid to say, we're all capitalists here, there's nothing wrong with that. But one of the things that you were saying was that, uh, you said that there's nothing listed how or why. And I've got several questions to just sort of get through. Um, there's nothing listed how or why, uh, it would be a, a negative. And then greatly, uh, you think guys, you guys think it would greatly benefit, uh, which don't say how or why. The other thing was that regarding, uh, the NC DOT, uh, how it doesn't have any concerns. What we've experienced in the past is that, um, the NC DOT doesn't really, um, I don't know how to say it. They don't really show a concern unless it, they have a certain criteria, it doesn't really affect us specifically. But it does, uh, impact us. But because they have that criteria, it doesn't like, um, it doesn't reach to, to this level. So, so in other words, I mean, um, non-concern doesn't necessarily mean it's an endorsement of what, what it is. The other thing was that there was, you stated that there was a, you know, if there was a bigger concern with the gas rupture, there was a bigger concern. Well, it just seems like, you know, if that was a bigger concern, then why would you want to exacerbate that concern by adding, uh, development? So, uh, yeah.
I wasn't saying, I mean, I, I was just kind of making the point that if, if it was, if it's that much of a concern that there is a potential for a gas leak or a potential for a line works, then, then, then I would think that you guys or the school or somebody would be petitioning Piedmont Natural Gas to move it farther away from, from the school or from, you know, from existing residents as it is today. And I was just kind of trying to, you know, put it as, I, I don't, I don't see that as a concern. Piedmont Natural Gas doesn't see it as a concern. I don't think that staff should put that as a potential concern. Driving here from Indian Trail is potentially dangerous, I could have potentially gotten a vehicle accident, but.
Well, I mean, that's like saying the same thing, that these things are located throughout the region. So, you know, and they haven't had a problem with it, but the same thing when a tornado comes through, it hits one house and not the other. So I mean, it's kind of a, that's kind of a moot point.
Sure.
Um, but, so just, all right, one of the main things was, said it would greatly, it greatly benefit the area. So, but at least maybe I didn't read it, maybe I was skeptical, but I didn't see how or why. So can you just remind us, I guess, how or why that development would greatly benefit, um, area?
Well, it's taken, you know, tax, tax base, the current vacant land that you're not, you're not getting anything from, so it's going. Tax, taxes is one, and then providing services and, uh, services for the community that the community can benefit from. We have folks that we're talking to currently that research the areas that they put their businesses in, they invest their money and they're saying, hey, we like this area. But they can't go here because it's not, the zoning doesn't allow it, um, so.
But could if the zoning, does the zoning really not allow it because fashion is flexible? Then we could do conditional use there?
Maybe we'll.
We can put.
Something like this, like this property in, in general, I can't speak to. I can't speak to other developers and what they will or, or won't do and the price points to the property, the buildings, the terms, et cetera, so I'm not sure.
For example, having a guest that they're trying to do that, then they would very simply, very easily be able to put a, uh, like a, a drafting service or a, or a, what's, like a doctor general, so any detective agency. You know, finance comprehensive, you know, those, those could very easily go in there, so.
I don't have to send it because it doesn't have to be in that one spot in this community. Do you have a question?
In the uses allowed in the OI, there are twelve of these that require conditional use permits, but you guys have not done your request as a condition use. Is that something that you would consider?
It, we, we talked about that and I think that, you know, all those, and I'm not sure what extra conditions are put on those because we have to quite make it that far yet. But I, I think at this point we're still just want to keep it open and not further restrict, restrict the property or the system. Or if we were to go through and get rezoning, not restrict it.
Well, obviously if you chose some of these, some of these, like, you know, a daycare center, the church or school, I mean, some of these would require conditional use.
Sure.
Cody, to go back and build on a question that Vince asked. You, um, you mentioned that you didn't feel like there would be any negative consequences on the school. And actually, rezoning might be beneficial to the school. Can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, like I said, whenever, you know, you know, I felt like that some of the, so if you've got, you know, a, a mother who comes to pick up a sick child, there's a doctor's office directly across the street, they're not driving and putting more traffic on the roads to take that child to the doctor. If there's a daycare across the street, mom can come pick up the child at school, go directly across the street, pick up the younger sibling at the daycare and not having to go all the way across town, split time. Um, if there's a, you know, a library, I was mentioning for outside of the classroom, learning opportunities. And these are, I'm just listing some uses that would be allowed in office institutional use, so, um. Does that?
And your thoughts are that they would be walking across the street in order to get there, why not, not into the traffic?
Well, I mean, if we're talking about adding traffic, that's driving across a, a road instead of getting in your car and driving ten or fifteen minutes down the road.
You're talking about the convenience to the.
Correct.
Convenience of the, the proximity.
Proximity. Um, and just, and again, um, it might just be about rookies. Uh, who gets to decide what this, so you guys wouldn't have a say in who went with, I mean, what you decided to put in there? It's just that it would be what they're allowed to put in, is that right? So as far as, we're like, hey, we'd love to have a library, we'd love to have a museum, we'd love to have a nonprofit, uh, whatever the case is.
It would all be used by right. It would all be used by right, but it would be subject to site plan approval, meeting setbacks, meeting partner requirements, building material, facade requirements, uh, et cetera.
Okay.
And then those, and then those conditional use permits, I've not been through that process within the village of Wesley Chapel, but that's a completely separate.
Right.
Process that you have to go through in order to get, yes, this is allowed under these specific set of conditions above and beyond, uh, standard side in front of setbacks, uh, the parking, et cetera.
Right. It sounds like you're saying there's not really any plans at this time, there's no specific plans, that that's still in the planning stages?
Correct.
Is there also a possibility that once it's changed to OI, that Mr. Moser would sell the property?
I cannot speak to it from a, from a, from a, from a, from a property. Our intention at this point is to get it, uh, go through the rezoning so that then that way we can market and sell and build, you know.
We need to sign a contract not to sell it? All right, one second. Robert, did you have something?
Uh, just specifically, um, real quick with that, regardless of what the zoning is, in order to get a permit, whether it's OI or residential, they would still have to follow all the zoning codes and they would be responsible. And that's when the engineer would look at it and look at sort of, and different things like that. Um, specifically with the natural gas, just to highlight, so what we have from, um, it's actually from Duke Energy, Duke Energy, but Piedmont Natural Gas, um, is that we had to identify certain sites. And it's not that necessarily every use in OI would necess, would cause heartburn, I guess, is the best way I can phrase it. Um, but we had to identify sites within a thousand feet, either side of the transmission pipeline. Um, they've either had an outside area or open structure that is occupied by twenty or more persons on at least fifty days in a twelve month period. A building that is occupied by twenty or more persons on at least, um, five days a week for ten weeks in any twelve month period. And then the last one was a facility occupied by persons who are confined or of impaired mobility. And so specifically, some of the uses in OI would be one of those sites that are identified. Not all of them, but some of them. And so that's what triggered, uh, my, my note about the natural gas was, were those criteria. Um, and then, um, if the conditional zone, the reason that I had suggested that is because then we would know the uses and, and those conditions would be tied in. And, um, a conditional zone would also trigger the traffic impact analysis.
So before you get into it, we've got about five more minutes to discuss this. Cody, I'll let you know where I stand, where I'm looking at this on things. Uh, one is obviously in our land use plan, right, when we identify that area as office institution, right? I think I, I remember being here when we reviewed that, discussed that intersection. To us, it didn't make sense to have some future development, uh, on those four corners, right? Something that would complement the elementary school. You know, and, and just like in our land use, uh, documentation after this part that here is built. Next door, right? So I think we're lucky to have somebody that wants to move forward and help us develop this. Actually, I think it's a great thing. I mean, so it's exciting to have, you know, someone here who sees our plan and wants to actually increase that, right? I mean, we want to not just develop two acres, but thirteen and a half acres, right, or more. Um, that's exciting. Now, I don't know if this is the right time to do that, and that's, that's, I hear that from a lot of community people, right? And I, I live here, I've got kids here. I think that it, I think it is dangerous to take that big of a leap of considering development at that corner at this time. I think future makes sense, right, which is why we did it, instead of dot at that intersection, right? Um, I would feel a lot better, uh, work with you guys on a conditional use zoning. Right, so conditional use zoning would be, is that, is that correct?
Conditional zoning.
Conditional zoning, thank you. So conditional zoning, you come back with your plans of what you want to do, right? And we work with you and approve that, right? So there is no more, you know, this could or couldn't impact, uh, traffic. We could have a report and look at that, right? There's no more of, you know, we're going to wait till DOT does all the other traffic. Well, we can look at that and put a time on that, right, and restriction on it. That lets us work with you and, uh, that's, I would feel really good about that. I mean, I would much rather work with you guys on helping to build something according to our plan, according to the village for all of us as opposed to just an open, you know, seven time fold, uh, acreage available for office institution, you know, right now.
And I think that would make everybody feel good as well because it would be transparent to them. And it would be something on, on your side and on, on the side of the village that whatever the final decision, what, or the final, um, product was, that, I mean, it would be something for everybody who would have to go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth because everybody would be happy about it. So, you know, but I can, I don't, I don't think that that can happen unless there's input from both sides.
So we got, we got, we got why they committed it, and why they abated for.
Would you make it more effective because then more money would be carried to those places because people would avoid them because you can't park?
You know, I've, I've talked to other professionals in Wesley Chapel, you know, attorneys, you know, tax people that say, I can't, I don't have any place. There is no available office space, right? and say, I can't, I don't have any place, there is no available office space, right? And when I saw this intersection, I thought that's, that would be a good place for office space, if it made sense, if it was done at the right time with the traffic. So we can't have, so we can't have the daycare. Those things to me doesn't make sense. I would love to review, you know, more in detail with you guys. That's how I feel. And of course, get the public involved as much as possible as well, right? So as opposed, instead of, I know we looked into previous and past kind of vision of what would happen, but we could lock anything down in the vision, right? Here we see a zoning change, but we can't look at any specifics. Why can't we just look at specifics, right? I would love to do that with you guys, I think, right? Whether it's the parking, whether it's the size of the building, is the use. I think all those things would make us and the public feel a lot better to do those specifics. So that's how I feel. I feel conditional zoning would make more sense. And, you know, and I would, I vote not to approve this request, instead come back as conditional zoning.
I think that would make the people who live adjacent to it feel better as well. Because, I mean, it's part of the good deal is to represent the people.
I'm not a business person, obviously, and I don't really know the financing and what's behind those decisions, but I would be more comfortable starting smaller than 13 acres. What's on the future land use plan is a two-acre slot, and what you're asking for is 13 acres. So, you know, again, that may not be practical on a business sense, but that's kind of the leap, you know, it's a jump from two to 13 acres.
And I mean, just understand that, I mean, we know that you guys have carrying costs and you have things that I mentioned that are going to impact the overall profit. I mean, because that's where anybody does it. We understand that, but by the same token, if it can't get approved, then it's not going to be a profit anyway. So next week, it's just a delay where referred profit from what, from what we were saying as far as start small and then, unless that's gone with it. And then, again, the more that we work together, then the less friction there's going to be, which is less time being held up to get approvals, which is going to be a faster turnaround time for a turn as well, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, if we approve the zone change under conditional use, if Mr. Moser sells the property, whoever buys it still has to follow that conditional use, is that correct?
Yes, and if we're suggesting conditional zone, just slightly different than a conditional use.
Oh, conditional zoning.
There's two different things, yes, but yes, it would convey with the property.
And where I look at this property, you know, it's a very delicate location, across the street from our elementary school, at an intersection of, you know, very difficult traffic. And we've seen farming there in the last couple of years, right? So we're looking at definitely changing the look and feel of Wesley Chapel by this happening. So one, that being a delicate area, but the way I feel at this point, if anybody came to us with a business zone, you know, B1 or B2 or OI request, I'd probably ask for a conditional zoning as well. I mean, not just here, but any applicant, you know, not just, not just Mr. Moser, but any applicant that came in any location. I'd feel a lot more comfortable with conditional zoning than just a zone change for business. I mean, residential, I think would be different, but for, you know, business development, I think it makes sense to do a conditional zoning. You know, again, that way we work with the applicant and make sure it's right for her. You know, because the unknowns really is scary, right? We've seen unknowns. As I understand, that's property development years and years ago was a big unknown. You just develop what you want and were left undeveloped property decades later still. Yeah, and so that's, the unknown is what we're talking about. And it's a history that, you know, that it's tough for the applicant to understand, but, and we live here, and this is, you can have better control over this. So that's what I'm recommending, is I recommend, you know, we not approve this, but request that we continue with conditional zoning, given we want to work with you guys to fulfill our vision or optimize that intersection.
So I guess moving forward, you have your options. Grant as requested, grant of the reduction of area, grant to more restrictive district, which there really is none, deny it, or you guys can table it until next month and give the applicant time to decide what they wanted to do. Those are really your options at this point. And I know you have said, you've made your statement. And then if you do make a motion, one way or the other, statement of consistency, statement of reasonableness. You can use the language that I use in my staff report for that if you'd like, or.
Great, thank you. You guys have any further discussion? No further discussion?
I'll make a motion, we deny the request. And as far as the statement of consistency, list the items that Robyn has in her staff report.
You're going to have to be a little bit more specific.
Am I going to have to read all of them?
No, you can just read the italicized, I think.
Okay. Staff does not support the recommendation, okay. Based upon the recommendation of staff for rezoning from R40 to OI as being inconsistent with the intent of the Village of Wesley Chapel's future land use plan date of 2015.
All right, I appreciate it. Vince, have a second? All right, any other further discussion? No? All right, all those in favor of the motion? All right, you dance. Thank you, Cody. Hope it's easy to work with you guys. Does this, does this go into council after?
It will, so what the next steps are, I will update the staff report and send it to council. At council's next meeting, they will call for a public hearing. We will then notify adjacent property owners to sign up on the property and run that in newspaper. There are certain time requirements that I have to get that done, and then it will go to council.
Okay. If, I'm just curious, can they file an application for conditional zoning in parallel with this?
They would withdraw their application and then reapply.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. 7B, final plot for Addington Crossing. Now, Robert, please give us an introduction.
All right, we've got to organize a little bit here. All right. We have Addington Crossing, 5116 Hudson Church Road. The size of the complete tract is 103.6 acres, 51 total lots. This final flat is for Phase 1, which is the south phase, 30 lots. Zoning is R40, and they have, they follow all the setback requirements. There is a 50-foot buffer along the Potter Road. Preliminary plat was approved by the village council on January 8th of 2018. Planning board had recommended approval at their November 23rd, 2017 meeting. I can get as specific or as not specific as you guys would like. But just to go through, after you guys had approved this in November 23 of 2017, you had had conditions on there, specifically a 150-foot right turn lane from Fernwood Road onto Potter Road. NC DOT actually asked the village to remove this condition, but they worked to reduce, something that worked better for them was a 50-foot storage and 50-foot taper. He's agreed to handle that concern, and council approved that. Army Corps of Engineers permit indicates that no pedestrian walkways can occur between the north and south sections of the site due to imperviousness in the stream area. A note on the final plats have been added to dedicate future construction by others and overseen by the Village of Wesley Chapel of a potential greenway trail across common areas of the platted Addington Crossing development. That was a condition of approval, and we've made sure that that's on there. And that the subdivision was granted a modification to cut down 232 heritage trees. The staff recommendation at this time is that you have seen final plat drawings for Addington Crossing Phase 1. They are inconsistent with the approved preliminary plan. The village engineer has reviewed and given approval, and we have approvals from Union County as well. To the best of my knowledge, this plat is in keeping with the subdivision regulations and in conformance with their previous plat, and so I recommend approval.
Did you say 232 heritage trees?
That was what was approved. And I think it was you guys had approved it with the modification to go to council. As I understand it, yeah. And just to go over this with you, and this is part of fine tuning what you guys would like, there was a checklist that was created that staff has been using, and I believe you guys were hoping that you would get copies of that. I did not give you my copy because when I went through it, I have a different ink color for each time I reviewed it, and it's kind of messy. I didn't think you guys would be able to read it. So if you have specific questions, I can address them. I do have the checklist if you guys wanted to look at it. But again, just for confusion, in the future, I am working to make it a little bit more reader-friendly and will have a copy that I can digitally send to you guys in your package.
I'm sorry, did you say it was inconsistent or consistent?
Consistent, sorry. When I get going, I just keep talking.
Yeah, with that checklist, I reviewed that with Robert here before we. So she's updating, I like the user-friendly, reader-friendly style.
Well, on some things, the village engineer looks at, and I don't look at. And so I want to make sure all those are highlighted too, so you guys know what the engineer's looking at versus what the planner's looking at, to make sure that it's all covered.
And so to your best knowledge, there's nothing left unchecked?
No, to my knowledge, yes, at this time.
That's good.
And how does your writing look, Robyn?
Yeah.
Rob, help me on one thing. You said the council, council has approved the 50-foot storage and 50-foot taper.
I believe so, yes.
Question, real quick, page four, assigned, dated January 14. Is there something to do with this one? If this one works with the other two? I just want to look something here that got changed from the previous through.
Is that the one that has the third row?
My law practice. Oh, the one thing, 14?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, yeah. Okay. Where's the piece of the greenway show on here?
No, they're not actually creating the greenway. The, there's a note on page five. That's a greenway note, potential greenway trail would be constructed by others, overseen by the Village of Wesley Chapel, dedicated across the areas. There was discussion about connecting to the thread trail, but the developer would not actually be developing it. They would just make sure that those lands were dedicated for that in the future, should the thread trail connect there. And I don't have as much history because I wasn't here during the preliminary plat approval. But my understanding was, is that it depended on some other developments in the area, whether they would be able to actually connect it or not.
I'll follow that conversation. I need you.
We also have the developer here, if you have any questions for the developer.
You guys have any questions for us?
I don't believe so.
No? You guys have any questions? All right, then, there's no other discussion. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the final plat.
Thank you.
Do we have a statement of consistency?
Do we need them? Do we need statements of consistency? No?
Do we need a statement that the files submitted, or just motion to approve the final plat?
Yes, motion to approve final.
I'll say, I'm.
All in favor? See you dance. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, here's Robyn. It helps me a lot. And, yeah, so far, Robert, good effort on the times.
Yeah, great.
I don't know how I get that.
You're doing good. This helps. All right, so we're moving on to number eight on our agenda, old business. Tree ordinance?
So the tree ordinance, I met with Deb and have all of her notes. And I have pulled up, I've talked to the Union County urban forester, who has told me to look at Waxall's tree ordinance, because in his opinion, that's the most enforceable one in Union County. And then he is going to meet with me sometime next week to go over some common issues that he's seen in other ordinances that either can't be enforced or don't work well, so that we can make sure that when we do draft it completely, that we're going to do it the right way. I'm going to ask for more opinion on him, from him. But when I sat down with Deb, my concern was that we created a tree ordinance, that we would have to take out a lot of stuff out of subdivision ordinance and then take out stuff in zoning ordinance to create this new chapter on trees. And so we might just want to update what's in subdivisions and what's updated, add tree stuff into the zoning ordinance versus having it as a completely separate thing. And so I will be talking to the urban forester, kind of what he, how he feels about that as well, and does that work or not. I've worked in other jurisdictions that have very strict tree ordinances, and sometimes they're enforceable and sometimes they aren't. A lot of places will have you permit trees. If you want to remove trees, you have to get a permit to remove trees. And I'm just going to be very honest, we don't have the manpower to do that, and to do it well, I should say, to do it well. And so that causes me a little bit of concern. I don't want to get into the point where we're overly, where you have to permit too many things and it ends up taking too much time and kind of not keep in what you guys want out of it.
Well, in your opinion, though, where you have to become like a veteran of the tree place, have you found that the results from doing something like that are more effective? Regardless, not even obviously if you don't have the resource, but have you found going that route is more effective to achieving the goal of what they, like the end goal of?
You mean permitting trees? A lot of times, homeowners won't even realize they need to. So if you permit trees, a lot of my time is going to be going out and telling them that they needed a permit before they took it out, and so it's just going to be a rainy issue anyway, unless we do something else. Something that Deb and I had talked about was regardless of how we go with this, is to create some kind of policy guide that we can put on the website for homeowners and/or new residents so that they would understand. One main issue that I had with enforcement right now is just subdivisions that have tree safe on lots. It's very hard to enforce that because once the developer leaves, you know, how do we know if, if the owner, maybe the third owner is going to realize that they can't take a tree down or whatnot? And then when does the heritage tree go from being a sapling to a heritage tree? There's just all these things that we have to think about. And so part of the new ordinance is I'm going to try and request that tree saves stay off of lots. Like I think Addington Crossing had trees able on their lots, but there was no other option, and it was already approved preliminarily that way. But just to minimize, minimize headache later.
I would like to say, when Sandy and I got together, started putting all this stuff together with, you know, obviously, of course, because, one of the reasons, besides the fact that our tree saves will have to be t, and they're all over the place, and what we can hope to accomplish by pulling them together, making them easier to find. So if we don't pull things out, and I wasn't necessarily saying pull them out of those divisions and those areas and not, and making them vacant, but leaving them there and just pulling them together so that people know how to find them. So if we don't pull them and make a separate chapter, at least try to make them easier to find. Because that's the big complaint that we had for people, where's your tree save? Where's your tree save? And I did notice in other towns that they did have those all in one place, so.
Well, our tree save, it's not called tree save in the ordinance either, so.
It's tree ordinance, yeah.
Tree retention.
Retention of existing vegetation.
Yeah, it's that, and then there's, yeah, and the wording needs to be updated.
But thank you for all your help. You were really easy to work with.
That's really all I have on that. It's a work in progress.
Okay.
I'm working on it. It may not be as fast as you guys would like, but I'm getting there.
We want to make sure we get it right. Yes, it's faster than I think. We want to make sure we get it right. Yes, it's faster than I think it, as, as important as getting it written or reading.
Fair.
It's not like you have anything else to do.
Oh, I know.
All right, the next agenda item then, sign ordinance?
The sign ordinance. So I have, um, looked up a couple of sign ordinances that have already been updated. Um, there are some intricacies that I'm trying to figure out, um, one of them being election signs. We can't refer to signs by what's on the sign because that looks like we're infringing on freedom of speech, and so I'm looking at what some other people have done and how they're dealing with that.
And I'm sorry, and that's for the, the volume of the signs or just the size of the wording?
Please start by content.
The content, yeah. The, the Supreme Court case that came down was basically you can't say churches have this rule and then a house has this rule or whatever, because the sign, what was on the sign, um, if you, you tell someone that they can only have a small sign of this type of sign, then it looks like you're trying to infringe on their freedom of speech.
Right.
And so we have to go by sign type, not by, you know, the content that's on the sign. And so it's looking at, okay, how do we split up the signs by type? What types and sizes are we going to allow in certain districts? How do we address certain things like election signs are allowed up without calling it election signs are allowed up? And, and how do we work with that?
Because there's a lot of controversy on that stuff with like larger, like banner sized things.
Well, and that we have to follow the state.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, big thing to bring up speed is, um, uh, Supreme Court statute came across, and essentially we may be liable with our ordinance now, uh, restricting somebody from some of such attention, which is why it's important for us to get some data soon as possible. Correct?
Yes, it's not as bad as some others I've seen, just so you guys all feel a little bit better, but it's not like you guys are saying, hey, if you want to advertise this specific thing, it's not allowed. It doesn't, it's not that strict, but.
Oh, we had a meeting with the new senator last week, and one of the subjects that was asked of the senator was to re-review the policy change from a couple of years ago that said that municipalities are not allowed to dictate the, um, building materials in the building. So we can't dictate whether the front of the house is brick, siding, vital, party board, you know, center block, um, and they felt that, uh, most of the municipalities thought they lost a lot of control when that built past, and that we're asking the senator to look at, uh, rescinding that.
That's good to hear. Hopefully you guys have some follow-up action for that.
The plan was to meet at the beginning and the ending of every legislative session, come up with a list of things to try and resolve, and then at the end of the session, need again to see what was resolved and what needs to be carried over to the next session. My positive being.
What did that grow out of? What did that grow out of, that municipalities can't, uh, control materials? I mean, where did, I mean, where did that come?
We don't know, and nobody liked it, so we're asking them to review it to possibly return it.
All right, anything else on that side ordinance?
Um, just that I'm, I'm, there's a, there's a rough outline in place, and I'm looking at filling it in, and you guys should hopefully have something.
Great, thank you. Maybe I remember not another business? Updates?
Um, just general updates. I do have a list that I've been adding anytime I see something in the ordinance that maybe I don't quite understand, or maybe it's a little vague, or things need to be updated. Um, one thing in particular that I came across, um, with, with a complaint actually that had come in, um, we don't allow accessory dwelling units, but our definition of what an accessory use or structure is a little vague, and so it's really hard to implement in terms of, we had someone that thought someone was building an accessory dwelling, um, but the way our ordinance is written, we don't define kitchen, we don't define bathroom, so then where do you go? I'm the type of person where I don't like to make arbitrary decisions, um, so I go to the building code. What is the North Carolina building code state to define these things as? And so that allows something that maybe you guys didn't intend to allow. And so little things like that, as they pop up, I have a list. Um, right now, the focus is the sign ordinance and the tree ordinance, but once we get through those, I'll have a list of little things that we are going to tackle. Um, also, just, um, so we understand, and, and as we get familiar with each other, and I understand how you guys interpret things, um, to go over how you guys would really look at a, the future land use map and how you guys interpret that and what you anticipate those, the future land use plan being, that would be helpful. I know an update is scheduled for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, when you guys want to start on that, and, and and work through the process. Reading some of the minutes in the past, um, it's been kind of, um, some people envision it one way, some people envision it another way, and you guys have the planning board to get to interpret it as something comes up to you, um, but just want to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward. So these are all things that just, they've come up in my head, and I wanted to address with you guys at some point. And then those checklists, I'll be doing one for final plat approval, preliminary plat approval. I have one for administrative subdivision approval. Um, I do have two administrative subdivisions that have come to me. One is for, um, a person who already has a couple of houses and wants to convey, um, one of the houses off to, um, a son, I believe. And then another one is for, um, a potential natural gas, uh, location, um, off of Waxall Indian Trail Road. And so, um, neither one of them have been approved at this point, but we're working there. So I reviewed them, and they have a couple of changes to make, and I'll let you know when, when those get approved.
Great.
I'm trying to think if I have anything else, but if you guys have any questions, go ahead and.
Oh, a couple things, uh, real quick before we adjourn. Uh, I'm five, uh, our minutes scheduled. Is that getting published anywhere?
Pardon?
Our, our schedule for this year?
Yeah, it does, it was.
That does go on the website, okay. And then, um, sure, we talked about before the meeting, right? You guys recall, we're going to fill out a form to pass on to council, if anything that we made motions on, right? And we haven't been spoke, uh, right? So, um, you know, we made a couple of motions here tonight, you know, specifically under new business, seven A, seven B, that, uh, might make sense to pass on our, our, you know, the vote of five is zero, any discussion that we had, right? And I think seven A was a big one. How are we, how do we fill that out, Cheryl? Is that you and I afterwards, or we want to go over this together and all write this?
Do you have blank form?
No, no.
I have an old form from twenty ten. Do you want me to hand it over to you?
From twenty ten?
Yeah. That's the last time we used it. If you want to talk, and then we can fill down afterwards, and what y'all say.
So this is, this is a blank. This is an example of?
Yeah, that's an example, right.
Okay, like project name, date of the hearing, votes by members, why? Right, discussion, findings and discussion and highlights? That's pretty much it.
I think if no other, good amount of it, then maybe explicit in how we feel about it, and if they were to go against it, then obviously it's on their own.
Right?
And I would also add a blurb under my staff report. The staff report I have for you guys, I will keep that in an add-on section, and I can refer to, um, this document that you guys are writing, and then all of that will go down.
Okay. Is this maybe something you can type out now? Is this something that maybe come back next week and, and one of, I mean, I, I don't know if I feel comfortable representing all of us if I just talk to myself.
Yeah, and it's representative of every single board member, what they, how they voted and why.
Right.
It seems like we should sit over here and write, we, I voted negative, or I voted for, or against, or whatever, and because, and then pass it to you, because you can't keep up with everybody's why.
True.
If you want to discuss it tonight, this is the way it was used back in twenty ten, is that John goes, okay, Deb, what are your comments? Vince, what are your comments? Sandy, you know, it goes up and down the line, and we can, if you want to discuss them tonight, I can put them into writing tomorrow and send them back to you and see if you have any corrections.
I think that works.
Okay, I mean, I'm not opposed to that, but my only question is, why do we do that? Because it's usually, you know, as an affirmation of, okay, this is what everybody's thinking, so why do we need to go and specifically?
Because the council will have a better idea of why we voted the way we did and what it was all about, right? And part of it was from, some of those decisions back then, it would take three months or six months before it all got hashed out. Tonight's decisions have been a lot easier.
I'd say a lot of times, like with the council, you know, and I always tell them, yes, I write down my notes, you know, like these last two votes voted five to zero. Sometimes we go three to two, like who voted three, why they voted three.
Right.
You know, I don't want to speak for someone else.
Okay.
And so it, it has a problem there, right? I mean, if I'm missing, so I think that's the purpose of this, or anything substantial to pass on, they have it written.
So give the council their understanding of what our thoughts were behind our actions.
Right.
If, if the council winds up buying this.
Mike?
I can tell how, I, if, if I were trying to find out how, if I didn't attend tonight, I was trying to figure out what happened with the planning board, I think I'd, uh, be more apt to go listen to the audio tape or, or check out the videotape, um, to find out what was going on versus reading a report, because a report might say yes or no. But there's three ways to answer that question. Do you approve of this? Yes. No. Or, no. Uh, and the inflection kind of gets lost in a report, and, uh, I, I would more be inclined to listen to the report, watch the video than refer to that report.
But it's easier to see the report because how many people are going to sit and watch the board readings? I mean, how many?
If it's specific, I want to know what planning board did on this, about this, and how they discussed it, I'd take a few minutes to watch the video.
But that's you, and I might be in.
Well, I would, because I get the meetings.
Right, but I'm saying, how many of them would do that in order to, I mean?
I think the video or the audio would be more accurate than reading the report.
Yeah.
So I, I would be a favorite of the report, but I'm sort of where you guys want to do, but I'm not going to.
Well, whatever we think is going to make it more of an impact on the council, I would guess. Right, how valuable is this?
Exactly, and I think I would take that to council first before we invest time into putting it together, just to see if it's, yeah, if it's something that you guys.
You might get totally different opinion from people that don't show up to planning board.
Well, I was going to say that, I mean, just get them, get an idea of, uh, feel now basically is, you know, are they really going to, if we ask them about this, are they going to like? Or are they, like, yeah, so I'm interested in knowing why, because then it'll make it easier for us to make a decision based on, we know exactly how and why you guys voted it.
Didn't this stem from council, though? Didn't this originate with council?
Not if, not if that report goes back to two thousand and ten.
No, 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 it came from planning board.
This did it.
No, I mean, I don't mean that. I mean the idea this time to do it, for us to do it. Didn't the council tell us, they wanted to know our, our input, why we did what things?
I think this actually stemmed from conservation subdivisions, when it went back and forth so many times.
That's right.
And it was, you know, what, what were we thinking again? This was kind of the document that we said, this is what we were thinking.
Now that you put it that way, then it's, it is valuable to, to memorialize it, I guess, for lack of a better term, as to what we were, what we were thinking at the time, why it sounded like a good idea at the time.
Well, it'd be easy at the end, you know, after we make a vote to say, Deb, why did you do it? Vince, why did you do it? And give a sentence to me. It makes more work for Cheryl. But, you know, I think it would be a little easier.
Even if this is, you know, on, on either side? I mean, to me, that speaks, that, that tells council what up. We were unanimous.
Yeah, but like, tonight, for example, you know, I have a problem, I'll be honest with you, with changing all thirteen acres to OI. I have a problem with that.
You already talked about that.
No, no, I'm saying, but that's what I would say, you know?
Oh, I see.
That's what I would say. I would say, I approved it, but, you know, because you, you want to have that input as to why you're doing what you're doing.
I think, though, at certain times, that it would be more beneficial for us to, even if it is unanimous, yea or nay, that it would be beneficial to, uh, state why, only on, depending on the, um, on the seriousness, I guess, of, of what it is, right? Because for something like this, um, and then because what, uh, what he was talking about, the, uh, or what the doctor was saying about the, the senators' intervention and that kind of thing, um, obviously, there's some, there's some gravity there, right? And so, um, if the planning board is going to come to them and say, you know, we're against this, then maybe if, you know, if we don't tell them specifically why, and because we're basing it on what people are telling us, we tell them specifically why, there's no question of why we're thinking what we are. Does that make sense?
Right.
So I think it would still be a good idea, not for everything, not for the obvious thing, um, but for the ones that are, I guess, even controversial, I think it would be a good idea so everybody would be on the same page. We know why, and, and again, when you have something like that, that the people and, you know, the, the planning board just sets up the regulation as this, it makes it a little more difficult for the, I mean, they're still going to do whatever they want, but, uh, for the town council to go against it.
Sometimes here, the why is important. David, I remember when you changed your idea for a, a decision based on some comments you heard in the audience, and so, you know, it's important to get the why's in the report.
For instance, here it says findings and discussions and highlights. You know, if, if we have public comments, specific, right, that, that might be worth putting in here.
Now, would we put their name and address in there?
We could. Obviously, you do. All right, so let's, let's, uh, let's ask you, so let's go down to two motions we made. The first one's seven A, right, the rezoning request. So I think we were unanimous five to zero. Um, do we think that's enough to say to council? Or do you think we need to give details about?
I personally think that we, I mean, not, not a diatribe, but just like a couple sentences of why, why these of us think that, because I mean, we're, we're all pretty much, I think, thinking the same thing as to why. I mean, one of the common threads or themes of the public comments was, was the same thing, traffic.
Traffic, right?
So, um, so I think that we're all thinking the same thing, with like a little bit of a variation, so just a couple of sentences.
Okay, I think we're good. We can do that real quick. Are you okay, Cheryl, to write on this, or do you want to take notes?
Feel free to write on that.
All right, so let me, uh, have to read my.
Do you want a fresh piece of paper? I can give you that.
Uh, that's okay, just write on this one.
Now, the only question I had was, is there a right or wrong answer for this? As the rules, uh, no, I mean, I'm being serious.
You have a fresh piece of paper?
I don't know, because I talked about this month, that's not, you know, you know what I'm saying? No, just saying. All right.
Interesting how he picked one to be the other.
I wouldn't have.
Well, you can get it's correct.
All right, guys, uh, this is, uh, seven A, the rezon request. It's for either side. Uh, I'll start with this.
My major concerns were, um, that there was not, no conditional, we had no idea what it was about. There was no.
No specifics?
No specifics. The amount of land being requested, instead of two acres, it was thirteen. And the future land use plan only recommends two acres, not thirteen.
Okay.
And this elementary school would have to change their entrance. If any, any development goes on that intersection, West Chapel Elementary is going to have to reroute, and they're going to have to build a road behind the church. Who's going to pay for that besides taxpayers in the way? So.
All right, and this was a five to zero. All right, Vince?
Yeah, um, you can sanitize this, however. Um, so it wasn't a compelling argument as to why, how, or why the, the community as a whole would greatly benefit from this development coming in. You mentioned taxes and services to the community. Those, the types of, of tax revenue and services that it's talking about being generated elsewhere, um, and not by development on that, on the block. The other thing was when we talked about the NCDOT, uh, it didn't have a concern. As I mentioned before, a non-concern for DOT is not endorsement of the project.
I'm sorry, several times, D O T?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, the DOT, you said that the DOT did not have a concern, is not, well, DOT not having concern is not, does not mean that the DOT is endorsing.
Right.
The project. But it's along with the same traffic.
But it does not have concerns, it's not.
Right, and then, um, the disagreement that, that.
uh, disagreement, there, there's agreement that there's, um, that it will have negative, that I think it will have negative effect, based on what the public comments were.
Okay.
Dan? Traffic and a blanket, um, approval of all thirteen acres.
Wow, okay. Yeah, you should have gone first.
Dave's my hero.
Seriously.
Are you one of them?
Well, I think, yeah. Not by training. I was going to say, because you get a damn week.
Doctor else?
Um, traffic. The lack of our ability to control what exactly is built there. Because I think it is imperative that whatever goes in there dovetails with the school.
Yeah.
You know, and, I mean, there are some things that could possibly be really good, but.
I doubt that they would put that there, though.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, because they're, you know, it's just too wide open, the, the, the straight reason is too wide open. And then, um, yeah, that thing about, he, him saying that the DOT had no concerns, I think he was reiterating the DOT had no comment. No comment is different, no comment's different, and then there will be a big change if we, you know, have to add driveways and things like that. We, and we really don't know how that's going to affect anything, so the, um, the proposed changes that are coming up in the next few years are actually in place. You know, that, that really bothered me, and then, um, I think that's it, that was most of it.
Okay.
I worry about the runoff to the pool.
Yeah.
And we have no idea what that might be, not pulled upon.
So, uh.
Yeah.
All right, so my big thing is I requested conditionals on. To find best solution for brutal rights. Solution and work together.
I was concerned a little bit about the buyout of those houses, that, you know, it's still private business, I guess.
Right.
You wonder, like, how did that happen? And then, um, I guess really concerned with the, the opposition of the neighbors. I mean, we have to, we have to really pay attention to that, because we kind of, it's up to them.
But they're not saying.
We can't have, we can't have discussion then.
Oh.
We can, we can say what we think, but we can't have discussion between us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's good, I'm saying, no rebels, right, all right? Yeah. Also, and then, that's okay. It's not fair if, uh.
No, free thing.
No, it's okay. All right, um, I think that was, that really answers this, right, the votes of members and why, findings and discussions and highlights. Okay? Good, then, uh, listen, um, I'll hand you this, it's obviously a little bit shorthanded here, work through it together. Do we think we should do the same thing for the final part, adding to, right, it was a five to zero approval?
No.
I think we had really discussion on it.
Well, there's no, uh, concern.
It was consistent, yeah.
Okay.
Joel, would it be easier for you if, when, as soon as we make a decision and we vote, that we just individually write down a sentence or two about our feelings for it and why, and then pass it, do you have to the meeting?
That is a great idea.
Thank you.
That is a really, really good idea.
And you wanted to make all those, you know?
Right. So I'll, I'll ask for that, if it's, remind me, uh, if we, if we make a motion on something that we want to convey our, right, our votes and everything, to their packet, let's do that, I think it's probably.
Sure, we'll see, but.
You're making an assumption that you can agree on. Well. I'm just going to look at this like I'm not talking.
You guys also have two people sitting here that are recording stuff, too, so.
Oh, great.
We should be able to figure it out, I hope, and if not, we can, we can certainly reach out to you and ask.
You can leave out the, uh, part of it that's discussed, all right?
I didn't know that. It's hard, it's hard, it's hard to operate a medical shorty, it's all right.
I'd like to be all discussed, you just go real fast. Slam the paper, go fast.
All right, that's all I had, um, for extra documentation here.
Okay.
Mr. Crumlin?
I had, I had two quick things, one an announcement and one a short story, uh, if you're allowed. Okay. One, the reminder, we have set a date for the annual retreat. Uh, you guys should all please try to attend. Cheryl, can you help me out with the dates?
So twenty ninth and thirtieth, I'll send it out to y'all. Do you need replies?
Yeah, so.
I replied, I thought.
I did.
Who replied?
I replied, I replied.
Just. As opposed to deciding a date? They've been decided.
They've been decided, please, please try to come, please try to bring spouse, neighbor, whatever. March?
What?
March twenty ninth, thirty?
Twenty ninth is Friday, and thirtieth is Sunday.
And the other short story I have for you is, we had a meeting last Wednesday with the new senator, and he had asked for two council members from each municipality and the clerk to attend. And everybody, I think, was representative except Morgan. Um, the meeting went very well, very positive. Uh, the new senator introduced himself, probably with his name again, Johnson or Jo- Jones?
Todd Johnson.
Todd Johnson. So Todd Johnson introduced himself, and in his opening statement, he said he was not going to try to micromanage municipalities, which I thought was interesting. Then, after a few minutes of his speech, he went around the horseshoe shaped tables, and he asked each municipality to say what their concern was. It was roads, 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 and then it came to me. And I told Mr. Johnson that, uh, I would ask this in a nice way, and if he didn't give me the right answer, I would ask him in a more blunt way. And he says, you're from Weston Chapel or something, I said, yes, he said, I think I know where this is going. And I said, well, your administration be, how will your administration be different than the previous administration? And he thought, not for a minute, he said, well, I won't be trying to de-ix any properties. And I got, like, half the people in the room, and you could just hear the people go, ah, all through the room. And I said, well, thank you, I appreciate, obviously, everybody here was concerned about that. But let me ask a more blunt question. I said, will you be doing favors for the people that are your friends or people that donated the most to your campaign? And he was like, oh, well, that is blunt. And, uh, he said, I'll give you the canned answer that we're supposed to give, and the canned answer was, um, just because you donate to my campaign does not mean that I'm going to give you a special treatment. So that was, uh, I think, a very positive meeting. Uh, we said that, uh, he was going to call for this meeting of the municipalities at the beginning of it, every legislation session, and then again at the end of every legislation session, uh, so that we can go over things he did, things he tried to do, it didn't get done, and things he should bring back in the next, uh, open session.
Who else went with you?
And, oh, I was, it was Cheryl, myself, and Paul, representing Weston Chapel. And then everyone had at least, like I said, two members, either the mayor, mayor pro temp, or, you know, those kind of people from each group. So, very positive meeting.
Great.
And it was nice to get it on record, saying what his stance was on de-ixation.
Yeah.
So, and it, it sounds like he wants to have a more relationship with the municipalities, and we'll see if that continues.
Did he say anything about roads, whenever he said roads, does he have any new?
Uh, there was discussion about what he going from Charlotte into Raleigh and never coming back. There was discussion about traffic, there was discussion about roads, there was discussion about DOT standards. Uh, there was discussion about expansion in general. Um, there, there's a lot of, I only had one question to ask and answered it. The rest of it, I just, I listened, but I didn't really care. Um, you might ask Cheryl, she, she was at the meeting, if there's anything that she got out of it, specific.
Well, I think one important thing is the legislature hasn't met until thirtieth, so he hasn't even been in office one day, so.
He's a freshman, his, his attitude may change after his first year, you know, on the Senate floor.
I think he's also going to realize a lot of things that he can't, you know, that he would like to do, but he can't.
Right, and we, we had a lot of talk, I mean, everybody says that they've got pull with the DOT. Cog, they have got pull with the DOT. Chamber of Commerce, well, we have, you need to be part of our group, because we're part of the, we have pull with the DOT. Uh, Senator, oh, yeah, he can, he can dictate with the DOT, too. All those people say that, and none of them can control what DOT does.
I think he said he was on the committees, one was like insurance, because he, I think he was an insurance person.
And one was on school safety.
Something about school safety, yeah.
Yeah, so it was a positive meeting, everybody looked happy, but I think the, the biggest bubble that burst in that room that day was when we said no to more de-ixation. So. I was happy about that, so.
I wonder if that's something, uh, potentially to share in the communications. I don't know.
You're welcome to write on, to write up on the Facebook page, your, your take it, your take, take out from there, your take away, take away from that, you know, guess what, folks, I mean.
That would be a nice article.
I'd be more interested in doing it at the end of the session to see if his attitude has changed today since the beginning of the session. It's okay, I got it all recorded.
Thank you, Mike. All right, anybody else see anything else?
Mike, what's on the show?
Sorry. Off you go.
Who seconded?
Vince, I mean.
Yes.
You got me.
Have the money.